Every public body shall give notice of the date, time, and location of its meetings, other than special emergency or continued meetings, of at least three working days in advance. By one, posting by notice on an official public government website, if any; two, placing such notice in a prominent public location at which notices are regularly posted; and three, placing such notice at the office of a clerk of the public body, or, in the case of a public body that has no clerk, at the office of the chief administrator. Reasonable notice, under the circumstances of special, emergency, or continued meetings, shall be given contemporaneously with the notice provided to the members of the public policy body conducting the meeting. Ms. Tanner, has today's school board meeting been properly certified?
Yes, last year. Twenty seventeen thousand ninety-three, the notice was provided fulfilling all criteria of Virginia Code, Chapter thirty-seven.
All right, thank you, Ms. Tanner. I duly call this meeting to order. Ms. Tanner, will you please call the roll?
Bassin.
Aye.
Campson.
Excuse.
Clanton.
Present.
Smith.
Martin.
I'm excused, you'll be here a little later.
Jordan.
Present.
Dr. Gabriel's excused for today. All right. We have a quorum present. Ms. Smith will be joining us a little bit later. As is stated, Dr. Gabriel and Ms. Campson will not be with us today, but we want to celebrate Dr. Gabriel and her son, Basileus, he's celebrating his two-year birthday today, so we're glad for them. So, at this time, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to enter into closed session. Hear her motion?
I move to enter into closed session.
My second.
Great, Ms. Tanner, will you please read the resolution?
Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for: A) Discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools. Pursuant to subsection one of the above cited code section, the subjects of this portion of the session are consideration of the personnel docket of this date; B) Discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record pursuant to subsection two of the above cited code section.
I think you've heard the resolution, is there any discussion?
Yes. So, on the, the motion didn't mention any other legal matters, but on the closed session agenda, it mentions legal matters. Discussing other legal matters?
I don't have any legal matters.
I recall the last work session, the board asked me to gather some information related to that student matter, and I have, I'm prepared to share that with you.
Question or two on some legal matters? Is it okay to have legal matters?
Um, um, what are they?
Well, pertaining to, we've had discussions related to, uh, personnel-related matters, does that fall under personnel, or should that be listed?
If it's personnel, then that is covered. We've got personnel, yes, that's good, that's covered.
Okay, thank you, all right, great. Any other discussion items? Hearing none, Ms. Tanner, will you call the roll?
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith? I mean, Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
We're gonna go ahead and get to closed session. Good evening, everyone. I'm not Dr. Gabriel, but Vice Chairman Carlos Clanton, Dr. Gabriel, and Dr., and Ms. Campson are both not present with us this evening. So, the next item that I'd like to do is to have our clerk call the roll for the official record.
Ms. Bassin?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Great, thank you. We will now, we're very excited to have our alternate student representative with us this evening, Charity Orne. She is a senior, rising senior, at Lake Taylor High School, and she will lead us in the pledge, so if you would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. At this time, I'll ask if there, we have the agenda that's before us, if there's any corrections, or if I can have an adoption of the agenda.
The Chair, just under the consent agenda, I'd like to have the minutes pulled out, just some updates to the minutes, I'd like to recommend for the board's consideration.
Sure. All right, let the minutes reflect as item five-point-zero-four. Right, hearing nothing, anything additional, the minutes, the agenda will stand approved. So, at this time, I will have the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Mr. Clanton, school board members, members of our community. It is with great pleasure that I share with you this evening some of the exciting enrichment opportunities in which our students were engaged throughout the summer. Clearly, it has been an exciting and productive summer for our students. The video that you're about to view will give you some insight into what our students learned during various summer programs, such as Junior University, which were, which was a program for our sixth through eighth grade students at Norview Middle School. There was a focus on math, science, and career ed, and so that was an exciting program. And we also have, the video will show you some of the things that our students were involved with, with Camp Einstein. That program was for students in grades three through five at the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, and the focus there was on STEM, athletics, and the arts. Also, during our previous, most recent, school board business meeting, I shared with you information about our two-day NPS Summer Leader Institute, Leadership Institute for Building Level and Central Office Administrators on July fifteenth and sixteenth. So, you will again hear about areas of focus for this institute, and some takeaways for our administrators. So, without further ado.
Norview Middle School welcomed approximately sixty students during late June and early July for this year's Junior University. This four-week summer enrichment program is for rising sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and features classes ranging from math and science to college and career education.
It's a very fun and very well way to learn, and it's very useful. We learn stuff, but in a fun way.
Makes me feel great, because then, then I know that I have those, have those resources, resources for next year. In my math class, I've learned a cap, most everything in that class, right, so it's a, it's a good refresher for me. In science class, science is like, it's, it's good, I like it. And then college careers, I don't have that at all, so it, I learned a lot in there.
I think it's watching the students learn new things, things that they aren't usually introduced to during the normal school year, and so they come here and they, they learn new things, they see new things, especially in science, one of the favorite classes for most of the students. So, it's just being able to see that, that smile, like, oh my goodness, you know, that aha type of look on their face.
Over three hundred elementary-age students spent four weeks of their summer having fun and learning at Camp Einstein. The camp challenges students through a variety of courses that emphasize problem-solving, along with classes featuring STEM, sports, and the arts. During the final week, parents are invited to an open house, so they can see what their children have been working on in camp.
It's great for them, 'cause it's like kept them busy over the summer, but, I mean, they love it. It's like stuff they would really be interested in, if they could do school without doing all the schoolwork, but it's awesome, it's great.
I've been doing coding, and we played with robots. We were doing myths, and breaking them, and see if they worked, and I did some competitions with other people in my classes. I really like going to camp, and if I just didn't go to camp, then my summer would be boring.
I get to do coding and robotics, which I really, really love coding, and I really love robots as well. And then I get to do like three D art, where I got to make, make a mug, a mug out of clay, and I don't usually get to do that a lot in art class. It makes me feel really, really happy, because as I get to do things that I would love to do at normal school, but I can't.
I really hope they get some kind of spark or interest of what they want to do in the future. We've worked hard to bring community volunteers in, and we've had volunteers for the last three weeks, tying all of the fun activities into possible future careers, so kids can get an idea of taking their interest into a further career.
Central office and building administrators from around the district gathered at the Norfolk Doubletree for their annual Summer Leadership Institute. This year's two-day conference focused on growing as leaders and interpreting data. At the start of each day, insightful guest speakers shared their ideas about leadership and improving literacy with the group.
Well, I think leadership is about building and battling, and I think this Leadership Institute does a little bit of both. People were excited to hear the comments by Dr. Birdsong, which really spoke more to the battling piece, and then there was the building piece, where we talked about supporting one another and building each other up.
With boot camp as the theme, and with the assistance from the team from Focus Schools, administrators worked hard on day one to find ways to become more effective leaders through honest, open dialogue.
We've been talking about leadership, and how leadership matters, and how it takes all leaders in NPS to make a difference in the lives of children. We've also been talking about going back to this notion of remembering that it's about every student, every day, in every classroom. No exceptions, and we've been learning strategies and tools, and learning from one another how to make that happen.
I think it's important to have a unified vision, to make sure that we have a central focus, to make sure that we're doing everything possible, not only for our kids, but for our staff as leaders, 'cause I think they are so critical, not only the teachers, but the students, but really, we want to make sure we can get everything out of them.
The district-wide preliminary SOL data was presented on day two, which gave leaders the chance to see where the school system is, and talk about what it will take to continue moving forward.
I think the most important thing we can do as district leadership is talk to our peers, whether it be central administration, middle school, high school, you have to be willing to do it, and it's hard work, and a lot of times, we're not, but we've been doing a lot of collaboration, we've been looking deep, finely, at data. What's the data say? What are the numbers? We need to know what the numbers are, where the strengths are, which we all appreciate, but where's the opportunity for growth?
At the end of the day, it's all about our children, and the difference that we're gonna make in the lives of our children. We're talking about strategies, moving forward, growing, trusting one another, being vulnerable, that was the key word for our conference, and it has just really encouraged us to do a better job with our children.
For more news stories and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNS-TV forty-seven, or the NPS website.
So, as captured in the video, our students were definitely deeply engaged in the learning process, and just having a good time while doing that. So, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank April Harmon, who serves as the School Division's Senior Coordinator of School Counseling, for leading the organization of the two programs in the video, and just for her overall leadership. Additionally, I would like to thank Latoya Highsmith, she's a fifth-grade teacher at Sherwood Forest Elementary School. She coordinated the Junior University Program, and Jennifer Lane, who serves as the Gifted Resource Teacher at Sewell's Point Elementary. They did an outstanding job, and I want to thank them for their leadership. And finally, I'd like to thank Channel forty-seven, and members of the Communications and Media Relations Team, for putting together such a great video to share with you this evening. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong, are there any questions? Right, hearing none, we'll proceed on to the school board clerk's report.
Good evening, Vice Chair Clanton, Acting Superintendent Dr. Birdsong, board members, attendees, and the guests who are here with us here tonight. Welcome to our school board meeting tonight. It gives me great pleasure to recognize and introduce to you the newest administrators to join Norfolk Public Schools for the two thousand nineteen-twenty school year. So, I would like our board members to come down to the front of the dais, to get ready to greet our newest administrators. Now, administrators, when I call your name, if it sounds like you, or remotely you, please still come forward. I don't mind being corrected. Again, we want to thank you for being a part of the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community, and joining us here in Norfolk Public Schools. So, our first administrator is Dr. Michael Cattaldo, who is now Acting Deputy Superintendent of Academic Affairs. Next, welcome back to NPS, John Hazallet, Acting Deputy Superintendent of Operations. Next, we have Bruce Brady, who is the Acting Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And as always happy individual, now we have Dennis Pfeifer, Executive Director of Elementary And next, we have Dr. Valerie Walton, Executive Director of Elementary Schools. And new to NPS is Dr. Laura Baez Acpic? You can, okay, welcome to NPS, come on down. She's with Bayview Elementary School, the new principal. And our newest assistant principals for this school year are Shanae Lewis-Davis, Assistant Principal of Academy for Discovery at Lakewood. Okay, we have Jennifer Murphy, Assistant Principal of Bayview Elementary. We have Dr. Lakisha Ireland, Assistant Principal of Coleman Place Elementary. And we have Michael James, Assistant Principal of Ingleside Elementary. In school nutrition, we have Shannon Navoe, District Supervisor. Okay, and our last administrator to be recognized, and you get a special gift, Hector Velasquez, a buyer contract manager with Norfolk Public Schools, come on down. And while he's greeting everybody, let's give them all another round of applause. And that's all our recognitions for this evening.
All right, thank you, and congratulations, and welcome to the NPS family. If my colleagues would oblige me here, I know I said that the minutes would be moved to five-oh-four, but if there's no objection, I'd like to move the corrections to the minutes at this time. Okay, Mr. Jordan, I'll recognize you.
Thank you, sir. On the, let me get back to it for a moment. Beginning with the seven-seventeen minutes, under the, uh, section four, for matters of the board, I think in addition to comments that were made by Ms. Campson, Ms. Martin, I think there are also other comments that were made by other school board members, and I just wanted to make sure that we document those as well. That was it for the, for the nineteenth, it was about thirteen minutes of, uh, school board matters, and I just went back and watched, 'cause I thought I had said something, wasn't sure what I said, but I think that there was some other items there that we probably should document.
Okay.
And I don't know if anybody else had anything on the.
Just saying there, yeah. Clanton?
Yes.
I too had a question, suggestion for documentation under the main motions for the, around the policy discussion.
Is this on the same date?
It's on the same date of July seventeen.
Okay.
To note the discussion that took place around the policies, and if anyone had objected, no, to note the reason for that.
So, this is the other side of this, because our meetings are recorded, really, our minutes should be reflecting action, so that's what should really be in the record. So, the motion, second, on what that discussion is, I mean, as far as what the vote is, if we didn't have a recorded record, then we would actually, you could put a little bit more in there, but if, whatever the will of the board is, but generally, because we have a recorded, kind of archival of the discussion, we wouldn't put that dictation really in the minute. But if there's any, but I mean, it's, again, it's of the will of the board, if the board wants to have that in there, I'm more than open to it.
Well, maybe I suggest maybe for now, and then as we work on our processes moving forward, we can have a understanding of what we should expect and not expect.
Got it, okay. All right, so I'll make the note of that now, for Dr. Gabriel. All right, anyone else? Okay.
And then I, then for the July twenty-fourth meeting, under agenda item two, we were discussing the search firm, it says RFP discussion, and the, it's written, it gives the impression that Attorney Cloud had made some recommendation, and then there was some agreement to the RFQ. The process was, we had discussed the RFQ process, then we discussed whether or not we should have to look at RFP and RFQ process, and what Attorney Cloud was advising, as I understood it, was, one, what the legal process was for the RFP, and then, from his perspective, he was recommending that we could follow the, an RFP process. I then come back and say, well, we had done RFQ process before, and, and recommended that we continue with the RFQ process, and that's what we ended up with. I just think the wording right now that gives the impression that the attorney was driving the discussion, and really, it's a board discussion, and the attorney was providing us with legal counsel and advice, and then the board agreed to, to go with RFQ process.
Is there any other corrections?
Uh, one correction to, under agenda items, number two, and, and then item C, it should be to review former RFQ and make school board edits.
Got it. Okay, is there anyone else? All right, because I'm noting that there are significant edits that the board is bringing on both of the minutes that are being presented, I'm gonna ask that the minutes be sent back, and that we bring it back, and include it in our consent agenda for the September board meeting.
Thank you.
Without objection, objection, anybody?
No, that's good, thank you.
So, we'll go ahead and, right area here. Okay, so we're, we've had a little discussion about this regarding citizen comments, but for tonight, we're gonna maintain the split of the citizen comments, and the board will have a further detailed discussion during our retreat, once we reschedule that. So, for tonight, I'm gonna go ahead and review citizen comment, and this is for agenda items, and so those, this first section is for those items that we will actually be voting on, and they're located on the discussion, section five, so your comments are related to that. And so, when your name is called, please follow these steps. Come forward to the speaker's podium. The podium may be adjusted to suit your height. State your name, and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you're employed by the system. State your position, and give facts or other relevant data. If you present a group, if you represent a group or an organization, ask for others to rise, and to be recognized. Please give any written statements or supporting materials to the clerk for the record. Speakers are limited to one appearance for three minutes. When the clerk signals that your time is up, please quickly end your comments and be seated. The school board does not respond to citizen remarks at the time they are given. So, Madam Clerk?
Okay, we have one guest speaker for today, and that is Cecily Myrick.
Ceci?
Basilia, oh.
Basilia.
Okay, Cecile Myrick.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Dr. Birdsong, welcome. I'm back again on the same podium, about Bogota T, but before I reach Bogota T, I would just like to say, the programs that you offered this summer seem to be awesome, but I just have one problem. I don't think enough of kids who are not quite as advanced were exposed to those programs, where they probably would need it more so than the ones who are doing very well in school on an ordinary basis. Those kids who are not moving so well during the school year should be exposed to programs like that during the summer, something to, you know, keep them up on, you know, on their toes, and be ready, and more eager to come back to school in September. The other thing is, I hope that Bogota T is not going to be left out forever. You named the school the School of the Arts. You brought in a dance teacher and a drama teacher. New equipment that I know of has been brought in, we have no cameras, no mics, internet production stuff that they need for staging and things like that, makeup, costumes, we have none of those things available to our students. So, our children are lacking for those ones who are not able, are not accepted in the governor's school, because you have to audition. Our children, parents don't have the money for ballet lessons, and jazz lessons, and things like that. Where Bogota T was fully staffed and properly equipped, the doors could be opened to a lot of children who have a lot of eagerness to become whatever it is they want to become, in whatever field of the theatrics, or graphic arts, being an artist, or a dancer, whatever, those kids would have a chance too, and they wouldn't have to wait in line to be accepted at the governor's school, or perhaps never get accepted at all. So, I'm just asking you again, for probably the fiftieth, ninetieth time, please staff Bogota T, get the things in our school that our children need, so that our kids can graduate high school, and those who want to go on to college can pursue the careers that they want to pursue, pursue, and become what they want to become, if they want to go into the theatrics, into the arts, the communication arts, the graphic arts, wherever they choose to go. Hopefully, at some point in this life, in my life, I'm seventy-five, I don't know how much longer I got here, but I would really like to see that happen, and because Bogota T has been open there since nineteen seventy-three or seventy-four, and you named it the School of the Arts, and that's all you did, was name it, and you just left it there to languish, and do nothing else about it. So, please, before you start bringing in new programs, STEAM and STEM and whatever that, it took CTE from nineteen, from two thousand and five to this year to come to fruition. So, if you're gonna start all of these new programs over again, where would Bogota T be five, ten years from now? I deplore, I deplore you, please, get some funding, and make Bogota T that School of the Arts that you promised when you built the school. Thank you.
Tanner, do we have any other speakers?
No, that was it.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move to our discussion and decision agenda, monthly financial reports, Ms. Ingram.
Chair, I think we.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Going bills and report.
I think, I know we pulled out the minutes, but I'm not sure we ever voted on the consent agenda.
Oh, you know what, thanks. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
So, I have a, trying to get this out here by eight o'clock, everybody good with that? But I gotta make sure we can take all our votes, so.
Hit the gallon.
So, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus the minutes.
Uh, move that we approve the consent agenda minus the minutes.
Is there a second?
A second?
I mean, who's second?
Sorry, it's all, seconds on.
Second that motion.
Okay, great, is there any discussion? Chair, hearing none, all those in favor, Ms. Tanner, can you call the roll?
Sure. Bassin?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Thank you, motion approved, and Ms. Ingram's already ready to go, Bassin?
Yeah. Good evening, Dr. Birdsong, Mr. Clanton, school board members. I will be giving you highlights of our financial reports for this afternoon. I have two sets of reports, so if you recall, we did not report on June financial. I have two sets of reports, as you recall, we did not report on June financials in July, because we were in the process of closing the fiscal year. So, those are the financial reports.
Oh, you want financial, okay.
I'll talk while she pull them up, but you should have them before you, that were posted. Okay. Preliminary, these are preliminary and unaudited financial reports, and basically, the numbers are before you, and we gave you some variances, analysis, differences between last year, and I have preliminary unaudited, because we are now beginning our financial audit for the financial statement for the end of fiscal year, June 30. So there may be some corrections, so once we get through the audit, if there are corrections to be made, that will be presented to you when the auditor presents the final board report on our financial audit. So, the statements are there for the June fund and Child Nutrition Fund. Are there any questions?
Basine?
I have a question on, related to the expenditures for the information technology in school facilities, which seem to exceed what we've seen, I guess, for the last two years. Is that due to some of, or can you share with us what that might be due to, or is that generally normal to see that?
Typically during the end of the school year, when all funds have not been spent, we go through a process of trying to fund those things that we could not get into the budget during the regular session. So where we may have had attrition for vacant positions, we would have repurposed those dollars and bought much-needed technology equipment. And in facilities, pretty much it falls along those same lines, there are projects and funding that is put there as well to address state needs.
All right, are there any other questions? Right, hearing none, we're going to go ahead and take a vote on these, because we have to do them separately, so we'll go ahead and just entertain a motion to accept the report for June.
I move that we accept the June financial report.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, that we accept the June financial report, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, Madam Clerk?
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Not me.
Basine?
Basine, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Overlooked you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ingram.
Okay, the second report, Ms. Tanner, is our financial report for the first accounting period of the new fiscal year, 2019, 2020. On the first page is our revenue report, revenues received at the end of July was $38.6 million, or 11.5% of the total budget, and it compares to 8.8% for the same time period in fiscal year 2019, and 6.3% in fiscal year 2018. The next page on the expenditures for the same time period, we had encumbered and/or expensed $13.5 million, or 4% of the total budget, and that compares to 3.6% for the same time period in fiscal year 2019, and 1.6% for fiscal year 2018. There were no budget transfers during the month of July, there were $58,000 or greater, and actually none at all, because the first month of the year, we cannot do budget transfers, because we're still trying to close out the month of June. Are there any questions about that report? And then behind it, I just, similar information, just given in a different format.
Are there any questions? Yes, Basine?
I just, I have a general question, so last year with the federal impact aid, some of the strategies that we used, do we see any returns from the, from the strategies that we used, and will we be using them, enhancing them for the upcoming school year?
We will be enhancing and trying different strategies, we did not see an uptick in responses. What we are going through, some training right now, they are offering training, federal impact aid for the new C session, so three members of the accounting team went to Fort Bragg earlier this month for training, and there should be additional training coming out, they are changing also the methodology of reporting, so we are taking advantage of the professional development that they are extending to us.
Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to accept the July financial report.
I move that we accept the July financial report.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, that we accept the July financial report, are there any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Great, motion carries. Section 5.02, crisis plan certification, Dr. Birdsong?
Mr. Clanton, members of the board, in accordance with federal and state requirements, on an annual basis, the school board must ensure that every school has a written crisis plan, and must conduct an annual review of each school's plan. So at this time, Dr. Lanz will present to you information about federal and state requirements, as well as address any questions that you have about any individual school's crisis plan.
Good evening, Mr. Clanton, Dr. Birdsong, members of the board, as Dr. Birdsong just shared with you, I will give you some detailed information regarding the annual review of school crisis plans, we will be discussing crisis plans that were prepared for the upcoming school year, the 1920 school year. I will start with the federal requirements, as you have before you, the NIM system, or what we refer to, the National Incident Management System, provides information related to the federal requirements about the annual school crisis plans, to ensure that we have procedures and practices in place related to safety and security in our schools. For this particular requirement, the school board at each school division is tasked to conduct an annual review of the crisis plans, and this is to make sure that there are procedures in place, practices in place, and that the appropriate staff members are in place to ensure that if, in the event of a crisis during school hours, that we have realistic situations and actions that would take place. As part of this review, typically the Norfolk School Board reviews the information, and we provide, the administration provides for the school board's review, a template that you have with you, that provides the detailed information about specific sections and specific requirements for that, and then, following this particular review or process that's in place, the superintendent will certify that the crisis, crisis plans have been reviewed. I will now share with you some state requirements, dealing with some state code information and some updates, and that, as I mentioned, each school board shall ensure that it supervises the development of these written plans, that all schools, as well as our safety and security staff members, put together, and we're required to have written school crisis plans that include emergency management and medical information, and that are consistent with the code section that's listed above. Additionally, each of these plans, we're required to share with the chief law enforcement officer from the Norfolk Police Department, the fire chief as well, the chief of emergency medical services, and the emergency management official from Norfolk Public Schools, and each school division, as you know, designates an emergency manager to oversee these particular requirements. And then I'll just share a little more detail about the certification, so following the annual review of the crisis plans by the school board, the superintendent will certify by the, it's usually August 31st, August 30th, this next Friday, that this actual review took place, and that all of the plans for every school are in place. After that particular certification, we are required to provide copies of the plans to the staff members that were listed before, and that we have the, of course, here listed, the chief of police, again, the fire chief, and the director of the Emergency Operations Center, who is the city official that we provide those to. Next, I'll share a little bit of detail about how this works, in that each of the documents that you review, and that you have access to, these are fluid documents, so the state is aware of, and we're aware of, that we have opportunities to update these plans throughout the year. So, in addition to information that is submitted for this annual review of crisis plans, throughout the year, staff members in safety and security continue to work with schools, they work with schools this summer, and will work with schools throughout, throughout the year to work on state requirements, including drills, but to also make sure that as staffing changes happen, even now, there may be some staffing changes that we noticed that may not have been in place by the time we actually prepared the plans, but might change as we start the school year, or even well into the school year. We are also required to make sure that we submit these plans to our Emergency Operations Center staff, once we have all of the mandated practice drills that are required by the code within the first 20 days of the start of school. And again, this allows for the proper planning, as well as practice of particular drills, and to make modifications, and make sure that the documents are as up to date as possible. And as we have noted, their security services staff members are available for assistance with additional training, we also work very closely with our, our emergency management officials in the city, the Norfolk Police Department, the Fire Department, Homeland Security Experts, the Sheriff's Department, and others, and other school districts, and state entities as well, to ensure that the appropriate training is provided and available to our staff members throughout the school year. I will also share with you just some general details about the crisis plan checklist that you have there, and I will read some of that to you, so that you won't have to trouble yourself with those, the tiny font, but for each school that's listed there, we have the categories across the top, which you can see, there's a crisis team coordinator that's identified for each school, as well as the crisis team members, and their numbers are included in the plans, the executive directors for each school, and their assigned schools are noted within the plans. The plans also consist of the administrative responsibilities and the crisis team responsibilities and assignments. We also have information that includes the backup crisis team responsibility, so in the event that staff members are out, or, or taking care of other assignments, that there are expectations for staff members to fill in. There are evacuation sites that are required for every building, and as part of this review, as well as part of the ongoing work that we do, we work to ensure that if there isn't the evacuation site, that it's an active site, that the site is aware that the school has identified the site as a location, and that, that is a viable site for that particular location, and then there are additional evacuation sites that are listed. The school maps are also part of this plan, of course, and as needed, or as new schools are built, or schools are removed from the list, we make those adjustments, and a command post is identified, and of course, where staff members and others can access medical equipment and first aid equipment to support those in the building as needed. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those for you.
Ms. Basine?
So, I know you talked about the mandated drills, have there been changes in the number and frequency of those drills, and can you share with the board what, what the drills are?
What we do is, and it depends, each year there are adjustments, or there are often adjustments, so in this case, the part of the drills involve the lockdown drills, so every school is responsible for doing that, they report that information to our security staff members, we work with schools individually to come out and observe those drills, we provide additional training if needed, oftentimes, schools will reach out to us for additional support for the lockdown drills, fire drills may be part of that, depending on the situation, and so we ensure that every school does those in the appropriate timeframe, as well as provide training. There are, as you can imagine, new staff members within buildings who may need additional support, there are some staff members that we have in schools, where they have very seasoned staff members performing those tasks, but they too will ask for support, and we're happy to go out and do that, as well as our first responders in the community, they are happy to assist us, and have done that on a number of occasions, to help with all of the drills.
Okay, but second to that, so have the number of drills gone up? My question is, what I'm getting to is, you know, what is the impact on the frequency of the drills, or the intensity of the drills on the children in the schoolhouse?
The, over the years, the, the numbers of drills, that has increased some, and we do get feedback sometimes about, you know, that this has become because of the times, that this has become something that has become customary, or something that students and children are getting used to, which there's research on, that that is unique, and becoming even more unique for school staff, students, and families. Not too long ago, the lockdown drills were not something that students practiced regularly, as you have seen, even in some of the incidents that have occurred, occurred in our country recently, that even some of the, the things that have increased the sense of concern and safety, that some of the false alarms have even created some of the drills that you're referring to, so yes, they have increased in frequency some, but we follow the state guidelines related to that, we're also very aware of the fact that we're sensitive to children, and sensitive to how we handle these things, and I'm sure there's some balance between how often we do it, and how much we prepare, and I don't know if there's such a thing as overpreparation, but we, we have to, you know, be mindful of, so we do follow the state guidelines, and they provide that information for us, but those numbers have increased over time, but we haven't received a lot of feedback about, at least in our district, not that I'm aware of, about lots of concerns about, yet, that it's too much. We do have people sometimes contact us, you know, to want to know more about what's available, and we have talked as a district about making sure that we can provide even more information, so that our parents and community are aware of some of those changes, as you suggested, Ms. Basine, about the increase in numbers, but also how we work as a district to provide some balance for our schools.
Okay, yeah, I was just, to piggyback on that, is, you know, how we monitor that, and how we even provide feedback to our legislators, because you know, I'm specifically talking about.
Okay.
Active shooter drills, and what our position needs to be on, you know, gun legislation, and really advocating for that, because our students shouldn't have to, have to do that, so that's something, I want us to be open to talk about and advocating for.
Basine, is there anyone else?
I just want to add to that, that communication to the parents, whenever we have off-site check, pickup points and things like that, I think we need to do a better job communicating to our parents what's expected of them.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, to understand that, you know, I guess I would say it's potential crime scene, and it has to be handled that way, but you know, we're doing the best we can to get them reunited with their children as safely as possible.
Okay.
You know, are going to start a meeting with our safety force once again.
Yes. Okay. Absolutely, yes, thank you. Great, is there anyone else? Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to certify the school crisis plans for the 2019, 2020 school year.
I'd like to make a motion to certify that the board did its action in reviewing the school crisis plans.
Right, do I hear a second?
A second.
It's been moved and double seconded, that we certify that the board has done its role and responsibility in reviewing the, the school crisis plans, is there any discussion? Chair, hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Basine?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the review of the job description of the clerk of the board. I have, I know that Ms. Smith and Ms. Basine worked on that, so if you all want to leave the discussion?
Sure, Ms. Smith and I reviewed our, what was our current job description, along with a couple other samples, and pulled from, modified what we had, and pulled some items from, based on our experience, as well as some sample document. on our experience, as well as some sample documents from the Virginia School Board Association's recommended draft positions. So, and you've had those to review. I don't know if anyone has anything glaring or anything that's been omitted that should be included, but I'd like to open it up for discussion as you've had time to review the drafts.
So, Ms. Bassin?
And Ms. Smith, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, the last sentence, under qualifications, we had said experience with Microsoft and then the rest. So, it says experience with working knowledge, that's. Yeah, it was supposed to be in this one. Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what.
Okay, so the last sentence, under qualifications?
Yes.
It says experience with working knowledge. It should just say experience with Microsoft Word, PowerPoint.
Sure.
Got it. Thank you.
I did have one in the same section, under qualifications. The first line states, "Any combination of education and experience equivalent to a four-year college degree." And what I wanted to add was, I wanted to put more emphasis on a four-year college degree, maybe a word preferred, and then, "Any combination of education or experience equivalent." So, that we just kind of put the height in that we'd like to see a four-year college degree, but we will accept any combination of experience.
We had that discussion, and we did not feel that the four-year degree was required for this position, and that a person could have extensive experience as an executive assistant or a clerk and not have a degree and be successful in this position.
The only reason why I put that in there is that there is a considerable amount of work outside of the administrative, and we are looking, I mean, just the clerical, that this individual needs to have experience with FOIA, COIA, also policy. And so, that to me denotes a higher level of just general experience, or even with just a high school diploma, that they would need something beyond that. Now, I do also agree that you could have an individual who had been working 25, 30 years and has a great deal of experience, but placing the word preferred versus required denotes to an individual that we prefer you have a four-year college degree rather than stating that you need it required. And so, my piece is just that four-year college degree preferred, not saying required, and then continue with the, "Any combination of education and experience equivalent."
How about preferred or? So, we're saying either or. I think we mentioned FOIA in here, I mean, as something that we desire. It's already in here.
So, I would point out that the current policy, well, not the current policy, but the current job description for the clerk for, I guess, a number of years, actually required a four-year college degree, so I'm a little, I don't know, perplexed in the respect of why we would change it to lessen it.
Well, so, as I mentioned earlier, you know, we reviewed some of the descriptions from other school boards and felt that that, it was common to have, to have a flexible set of qualifications, but one that really highlighted experience. So, you know, in talking about it, you know, yes, they have a lot of duties, but much of that is administrative and clerical, as far as, you know, the policy piece, for instance. A lot of the work, at least that we've had with, related to our division, has been mainly of a clerical nature. And support, you know, with our, we have legal counsel to provide more detailed support as it relates to the state code, any other legal references, but aside from that, the duties are still, you know, clerical in nature. So, I mean, I like.
I like the word preferred.
Does, do any other board members have anything, want to weigh in on that?
I'm comfortable with what's written. I think that it gives more flexibility in terms of the candidate pool. I also think it fits with our efforts of making sure there are pathways for individuals, whether they pursue a four-year degree, or a two-year degree, or acquire certain certification and skills. So, I think the flexibility that you all have provided fits with that framework that we've been pushing as a division.
So, is the, as I asked the question, so, I guess what I'm hearing is, is that we're creating more flexibility, and that's why we're changing from what we already have on this particular qualification.
Absolutely. Correct.
I mean, I still like to see preferred. I mean, when I look at job descriptions, you typically have preferred or required. Preferred sends a message out that we're looking for a higher level. I don't think it deters anyone from applying, and I still think that you have the, "Any combination of education and experience" can lead up to that, but my personal preference is that you have preferred, but I'm only one, and whatever the role of the board is, I'll go with it.
Amen.
Yes.
Along the same lines, I think that what I've understood of the positions are that the job description was based upon what the clerk does currently, and I think having, I agree with having the preferred, and I think the reasoning from previous conversations that I've gathered is that there are other things that we'd like to, the clerk, to also grow into, and so having that college degree or that experience would be able to qualify them to take on more responsibility over time. So, I agree that I think the four-year college degree preferred would be great, especially given the fact that we, you know, in our, in my experience this past year, that I've heard many times that there aren't very many people who are qualified to be a clerk, you know, it's a very small pool that we're, that's out there. And so, you know, again, I think it's not going to hurt to put a college degree preferred, and again, to just keep moving forward with the responsibilities of the clerk, and as we, you know, we move in a positive direction for our board management. And another comment is that some of the, I just think that some of the grammar in here is poorly worded. There's some phrases that need to be cleaned up.
And one more. Under qualifications, the second sentence, we said after the word includes where it says supervisory, we said leadership instead of supervisory, which includes leadership responsibilities at the end, last three words, one, two, three.
Okay, all right, is there anything else? So, I think we noted that, I think we had, everyone kind of looked at this, that there were some general grammar things that need to be worded, Smith, there. We have a clean version, I know that we've denoted some changes in there. I'd like to just, I'd like to move to add the preferred in the qualifications, since it's coming from committee, and just to kind of do it that way, and then if it doesn't pass in there, then we can just vote on a clean vote.
Okay.
So, do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, it's been moved and probably seconded, that we add preferred to the qualifications. Is there any additional discussion? This is an amendment to what's being presented from committee. Not hearing any. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Bassin?
Nay.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
So, now, we will, based on what we have, knowing that we're going to send this back for some wording for grammar, so we're not changing intent, but just content. So, with that, this coming from committee, do I have a, actually, do I, all I need is a second. Do I have a second?
I had what, so, one of the things before, before we go there, so. I wanted to respect Dr. Gabriel's feedback that she had provided ahead of today's meeting. I was just trying to pull up. So, there, the reference to the Freedom of Information Act and the procedures related to that, there are some wording changes, you know, about publicly posting meetings and things of that nature, where, let me see, I pulled it up. "Under essential functions," about ensures that reports prepared by staff or school board members and/or board meetings are accurate, ready for distribution, and publicly posted is one of the recommendations that I'm bringing forward to respect one of her recommendations or suggestions for inclusion.
Could you restate that for everyone?
It is the third item, or, sorry, I'm looking at the redline version, since I'm working in that.
She put it in the redline version?
Well, the red, the redline is, yeah, so it's the second highlighted, under essential functions, or the second bullet in the clean version.
Ensures that all reports prepared by staff or school board members and/or board meetings are accurate and ready for distribution.
Yes, and publicly posted is what I'm recommending we add.
Okay.
It's not, so to be clear, it's not in the current drafts that you're looking at. She had sent them ahead of today's meeting.
Okay.
So, I'm.
So, you're stating, "And/or board meetings are accurate and ready for distribution and publicly posted?"
Correct.
And you may want to add, "In accordance with Code of Virginia."
Okay.
Okay, so, "Ensures that reports prepared by staff or school board members and/or board meetings are accurate, ready for distribution, and publicly posted in accordance with Code of Virginia."
Correct.
Okay.
Are we able to comment on that, or what are we doing here on that, with that regard?
Because it's still a committee report, so, Ms. Bassin, if you're a friendly amendment and accepting that, we'll add that, and then Mr. Jordan, if you want to discuss on it.
You all recommending adding that?
Ms. Bassin, have you accepted, okay?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I have some concerns about that. One, I think to put the burden on the clerk to ensure the accuracy of administrative reports, I don't think that is a responsibility of the clerk. I think that falls with the executive, the administrators who are submitting reports, and their, and administrative team to review, to ensure that the content.
I agree with that.
The content is accurate.
So, what if we, no, go ahead.
And the second thing, in regards to the FOIA requirements and the notices, I think that is a responsibility of the board as a whole. The clerk is there to help serve and facilitate that process, and I think it gives a, it potentially puts us in misalignment with what our requirements are as school board members under FOIA, seemingly as though we are placing our responsibilities solely on the clerk. So, I would just say that we not include the amendment in the description at this time, and that, you know, once we have a clerk and works with the superintendent and the board on our processes, that just be something that is spelled out as we work with the clerk in performing those functions. I don't think it should be codified in the job description, is basically what I'm saying.
Okay. And additionally, what I'm, what I am then hearing in your comment, and it seems that Dr. Birdsong is also in agreement with, is that that whole statement may not be what you may be recommending, that we remove that whole statement, that ensures that reports prepared by staff or school board members and/or board meetings are accurate and ready for distribution.
So, if.
Is that correct?
Yes, but I was, I wanted to, and I respect what Mr. Jordan stated there, and then I was thinking about adding, "Works with the superintendent to ensure," because under state code, the clerk reports to the superintendent, and that's one of the roles that we're asking there. I will also say that it is the board's role and responsibility to identify staff, and that's selecting a superintendent and also a clerk, which are the two positions we vote on annually, to support us in our functions of proper notification and making sure that information gets out. So, I would ask, and I don't know, Mr. Jordan, if you would be amenable, if works with the superintendent to ensures that reports prepared by staff or the school board members and/or board meetings are accurate and ready for distribution and publicly posted in accordance with the Code of Virginia.
So, again, I guess where I'm trying to get to is the content of a report. So, if you look at the reports that we currently receive, you'll see how it goes up through the chain of command, and each person and their responsibility initials or signs off that they've reviewed it. To me, having that chain of command falls under the administration. Ultimately, the superintendent is signing off and providing to the board that the report that we're receiving is accurate. I don't see the clerk having any role whatsoever in terms of validating that content, unless for some reason the superintendent or anyone else were to ask the clerk to be involved in that, so I don't think that should be codified. And then in terms of the FOIA notice, I was just simply stating that we receive, we have responsibilities under FOIA as school board members that we swear to uphold, and I just don't want there to get, be any confusion in terms of what our responsibility is, in terms of notices and so forth. What we're doing is just, we have the clerk who is assisting us in ensuring that as a board and as a governance team, that we are complying with the, you know, with the law, and I just think that putting that in the job description may cause some confusion as to what the role of the clerk is in that process and what our responsibility as a board is in that process. So, I'll just say for now, if we just left that out, I think it would be easier, and then my concluding comment is, I think ultimately, whatever we do here, still should go for review by the human resources leader, who I think is the person who has the expertise to ensure that this job description meets the needs of the division.
And with that said, Mr. Billups and I did have an opportunity to review it, and we do have some comments and concerns. I don't know if you want us to offer that now?
Absolutely, yeah.
So, and just some questions, just for feedback, why certain decisions or recommendations were made. If you'll look at distinguishing characteristics, on the redline copy, you have repetitive, but actually, that's not a repeat of anything already mentioned on the job description. Typically, we do state that on job descriptions when there is a position that does have a characteristic that is different from other positions. For example, this is the only position assigned to the school board, so that would make it, distinguish it from any other position. So, definitely, that needs to be included
Okay.
within the job description. And if I may go on.
Just so I'm clear, the statement that starts, coordinates overall planning, is that where you are?
Under supervision.
Eliminated?
Looking at the redline version.
I'm under the redline. What page you are on?
On number one, under supervision, distinguishing characteristics, and the feedback was that it was repetitive. This is an administrative position assigned to the school board.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's repetitive, I just think it's, the state code has this gray area between the clerk and its relationship to the school board and its day-to-day responsibility under the superintendent. Maybe assigned, maybe if we say support, might be better than assigned, but, you know, just for, I'm uncomfortable if I was wordsmithed the whole thing, but I'm just trying to go with the flow.
Right, and I prefer support over assigned, if we wanted to make a change there.
Well, I'm sorry, can I speak?
Yes.
Because the very first sentence says, "The employee in this position provides administrative support to the school board."
And I guess my comment is, again, with positions that are different, atypical than normal administrative positions, we just add that as a part of our template for Norfolk Public Schools.
I mean, just repeat that, if you want to read.
Yeah, because it is a repeat.
Same thing.
Yeah.
And it has the word support in it.
So, it's more of a format type thing, right?
Yeah, just so it's very clear, as a distinguishing characteristic for the position.
Okay.
And I'm just going to kind of go through the entire
Okay.
job description. You have marked out or eliminated supports the preparation of the agenda, along with all of that, remove repetitive. So, as we were reviewing this, we weren't certain why this section was removed. It doesn't appear to be repetitive.
Because it's in, it's in different places. Manages all activities, ensures that, well, we're.
Essential functions is where it's primarily.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, can you show me?
First, first bullet, I know, essential functions.
The first bullet, the third bullet, has, they all have components of that.
I, I guess what I'm saying is that I don't see where it says, "Preparation of the agenda with input from, example, the board chair, the superintendent, the vice chair, and other key staff members," and I'm not going to read the rest, but I, I don't see where that's clearly noted anywhere else, and we may have missed it, but I think we did a pretty thorough job of.
So I understand what you're saying, and the include assistance in developing the agenda, but I think the port that Ms., that Dr. Bird is pointing out is that this supports preparation of agenda along with the input of board chair and so forth. Looks like it's coming directly from our policy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And also, just generally with job descriptions, in the case of job descriptions, more is better than less, because you need to be very prescriptive, descriptive about what the expectations are, so you leave little room for gray area as it relates to what you expect certain individuals to do. And so I know you, you guys tried to mainstream everything, but there's a reason why, you know, job descriptions are three, four, or five pages.
Okay, so.
So Mr. Chair, I guess I get that, that, that point is kind of where I was. So if the, if the board can communicate to the administration what our high-level expectations are.
Please.
And be in agreement on that, then I think we can then leave it to the administration to craft the appropriate job description.
Gladly do so.
Based upon the experience that they have in order for us to be successful in, in our effort, and I think it's a much better governing process than for us to try to wordsmith this, not to mention receiving feedback from the administration, you know, and trying to vote on it. I, I just think that.
Right, agree.
I think, from what I hear, there's some general consensus on the high-level points, and if we can just kind of yield this over and they come back with a draft, and we just look at it and say it's fine, we can hopefully move, move on from that, from that point.
So just for, and, and I, I hear the same thing. I was like, when I started looking over at these notes over here, Dr. Birdsong's got great notes, but I was like, we're not going to go through all these minutes.
I was going to make my point.
So just for the, for the record then, so let me, do I hear a motion to send this to the administration?
Yes.
So that now we've kind of done our part as a board and kind of given a high level, send this to the administration to come back to us, and so we can do that the 11th or the 18th board meeting.
What about the 18th? It, it, just tell us where.
So is the board comfortable with the 18th to come back and we take action on that?
Would you prefer doing it during work, a work session?
11th is a good 2.
Personally, I'm not sure I'm clear on why a vote is required, but if.
Just so that we have it, we're sending it back to the administration. We had it, I just want it for the record, just as much as you want to make sure those minutes were clean, I want to make sure we got a record of it.
Right.
That we're sending it back to them with the direction.
Right, if the intent is for the board to vote on it, then I think we can, we should have a draft available for the work session, and if there's any more wordsmithing, you do it at the work session, you come to the business meeting and you vote on it.
Got it, all right. So as I say it, motion to send it back to the administration to come back to us with a draft by our 11th work session and for a final vote of approval on our 18th business meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I'm, oh, maybe the committee wants to.
I move that, that the draft be sent back to the administration for, for review and to be brought back to the school board on September 11th.
Okay, great, do I have a second?
Second.
So we moved to properly second it, that we send it back to the administration for their final wordsmith and be brought to us back on the 11th for review and a final action on the 18th. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Thank you, all right. So I've lost my agenda. So is there, we have a new, we have a section down here for new business of 5.04, and we put that in the agenda for anything that we might take out. So now we're actually going to move to citizen comment for non-agenda items, and so the same protocol governs you at this time, and so Madam Clerk, if you will, call those individuals who wish to address the board.
Yes, our first speaker is John Somerville.
Good evening, Mr. Clanton, Dr. Birdsong, members of the board. My name is John Somerville, and I am a former student of Bogota T. Washington of Norfolk, class of 69, and I'm here this evening to ask for some information that I'd like to have a chance to take a look at. I'll give you a short synopsis of myself, what I've done. I've graduated from Bogota T., as I said. I have a associate's in mechanical engineering from Norfolk State. I have a associate's from the Community College of Rhode Island. I also have a bachelor's science in construction engineering and management with a minor in facilities management. I was the director over Miriam Hospital, which is one of the largest cardiac hospitals in the Northeast, and I worked with the Naval Facilities Engineering Command for 10 years in construction and maintenance. My question for you is, I'd like to find out the possibility of seeing your maintenance plan for Bogota T. Washington High School. I understand that you have what they consider a FOIA plan, I'm not familiar with that term, because we use a master building plan as our means of being able to review school maintenance, look at long-term repairs, and what needs to be done. If that is possible, I would like to get that information so that I could go through it and review it, hopefully make some recommendations to you that might be helpful for the board as a whole. So if that is possible, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, our next speaker is Jeanette Walker.
Josette.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to read your hammer, and I apologize.
Oh, no worries. Good evening, Vice Chair Clanton and Acting Superintendent Birdsong. My name is Josette Walker, I'm a class of 1979 graduate. My daughter Erica is a 2000 graduate, and I'm the Vice Chair of Bogota T. Washington's Concerned Citizens of BTW High School. Please sing. Thank you. I'd like to read a report that I did recently that the committee, the Concerned Citizens Support, I hope I have enough time to finish it, and it's titled, "BTW High School Art Corridor 2019. Bogota T. Washington High School is located on a parcel of land east of Virginia Beach Boulevard and west of Park Avenue," and that's based on how you're standing on the corner. "This geographic zone has granted BTW High School a centennial of prime property in the Norfolk region of Virginia. Just over a decade of Norfolk's municipal region revaluation profited BTW High School within the zoning of Norfolk's Art Corridor. The city investment into art sculptures placed around the city on selected properties has positioned BTW High School locality less than five minutes from five of those sculptures on, no matter what direction you go to. The first sculpture is located adjacent to the Addicts Theater at 1010 Church Street. The second sculpture, located in the Broad Creek neighborhood on the corner of East Virginia Beach Boulevard and Valentine Boulevard. The third sculpture is adjacent to the recently constructed, constructed Jordan Newby Anchor Branch Library located at 1425 North Chester Avenue. The fourth sculpture is located at the Norfolk Tide Life Rail System Depot near the MacArthur Mall at 8004 MacArthur Square Station. And lastly, the fifth sculpture is located at the downtown Norfolk Amtrak Station at 280, 280 Park Avenue, have been incorporated into the Marama image of the city making it a culture arts new place to be. The city of Norfolk is highly invested in art, with several pricey sculptures strategically placed within minutes from our beloved Alamoada. To me, this signals one example of several reasons why BTW High School should remain Norfolk's High School of Arts. The new energy of Norfolk Neon is better known as Norfolk's Neon District, is the home of the world-renowned CrossFit Museum of Art, the Art Center, and the Harrison Opera House. The district also has a comedy club, apartment rentals, Sheldon, market hosts, art festivals, and much, much more to celebrate the love of art. The Harrah Players was once an instrumental part of BTW High School. In the late 1970s, Hugh Copeland was a performance art instructor for Bogota T., and you all have copies, and I'll let you all read the rest, and I've also put in some CT program information as well as some STEM program information. Thank you all.
All right, our next speaker is Carter Meline.
Good evening, everybody, good evening, Carlos, good evening, Dr. Birdsong. My name is Carter Meline, and I'm a parent of a 15-year-old child with autism. I've been dealing with, for three years, with the city of Norfolk, doing the request for proposals to find purchasing for private day schools for people with disabilities under which my child fell. I think the request for proposals is the reason that my child had this Norfolk City contract three years ago that had 10 people that had never met my child and basically contracted her to a school based on no data with the city, they just had a vendor. Well, it turns out the city of Norfolk is doing it all over again. In two days, the Norfolk City Request for Proposals for Private Day Schools is going to close. I really doubt that every private day school in Virginia was notified about this. I doubt that the Virginia Department of Education was notified about this. I doubt that the United States Department of Education or the Office of Special Education Programs at the USDAE were informed. I think this was a Norfolk City document. So I brought a prop for you to explain this. This is dollars. When the city of Norfolk says, "We will put our dollars with private schools in a process that does not involve the Norfolk Public Schools Special Education Department," that's where the IEP decisions are probably going to go. And I've talked to numerous lawyers about this issue, and if a parent wants to challenge this, you can do something like a due process hearing, you can spend $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 in a couple of years in court, but you have to prove that the Norfolk City RFP vendor is inappropriate for your child, and the Norfolk City is not competent or qualified or able to make special education decisions. I've told numerous members of this school board that this is going on, and quite frankly, the ones that I've talked to, I'm very disappointed in you that you've not found a way to fix this, because I've tried on my end. I've talked to many lawyers, I've sent emails to Georgetown Law School, Duke Law School, I mean, I filed an OCR complaint that still hasn't been resolved after three and a half years, because the Office of Civil Rights at the United States Department of Education does not cover Norfolk City human contracting for special education private day schools. It's not their jurisdiction. The, the city of Norfolk is not a special education business. These documents say the word IEP almost nowhere. This is a 29-page document, and it says IEP two times. Special Ed's about IEPs. This is a 16-page document, it says IEP twice. This is going to close in two days. Norfolk City attorneys are going to contract vendors, and whoever gets the contracts is going to get a lot of money. I estimate $46,000 is the average kid in the state, that's the average price per kid, that's, that's documented, and they're estimating 50 kids, and they're estimating a five-year contract. So they're saying 50 to 100 kids, so that's an estimate of $11,500,000 to $23 million for that five-year contract going to private companies. These are not your district, they are private companies, and they should be contracted by a per-child basis through IEP decisions, and I think what you are doing is just a flagrant, flagrant civil rights violation. I'm furious this is going on. Okay, bye.
Our last speaker, who signed up before 7:00 PM, is Dr. Ellen Fittson-Rider.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Birdsong, apologize, I came from yoga class. I once again start another year cautiously optimistic, and hopefully this year will meet my, my hopes for my child. My name is Ellen Fittson-Rider, I'm the parent of a Norfolk Public School middle schooler. She's going into eighth grade, I'm also a member of the CAC Committee, and some of my comments today I'll be sharing with the CAC Committee meeting tomorrow. I'm speaking as a parent tonight, but I want to, this is my eighth month in a row, keep special education in your mind. I, I attended a PTC training. PTC is the Parent Educational Advocacy Training Center, that they frequently partner with the VDOE, and this particular meeting was called Building Trust on IEP Teams. It's one of several I've attended, I had issue with some of this content in the PowerPoint. One point they mentioned was about research, it takes seven years to rebuild trust once it is lost. So the PowerPoint said the main reason for tension at the IEP table is parents' stress at having a special needs child and anxiety with that. They left out any tension created by the other individuals at the table, such as little to no special education experience of people sitting at that table, for example, with general education teachers. Power struggles and professional conflicts among administrators and school staff, I experienced these over the past several years. Anticipated argumentativeness of parents creating tension at the IEP table. Parents don't show up at their first IEP meeting wanting a fight, they don't show up at their second one, or probably their third. I, if anything, I trusted too much for too long. We go expecting assistance, guidance, professionalism, they were expecting the other people at the table to want to do the right thing for our child, that did not happen for several years with me. It takes seven years to rebuild trust, and that's if an effort is made for, to even heal it. So that said, the Parent Resource Center at the Rosemont School, Academy of International Studies, yay, do you guys, you know that it's there? It would have been extremely helpful to me as a parent and to our family. Please make sure that all special education parents know about the Parent Resource Center. When they get that little colored packet of the Special Education Code for Virginia, they get information, not post it on a wall, get it to them, because parents need this information. They need to be educated, and the education for your administrators and staff at the elementary level, that's the people who need to create strong relationships with parents, because that's where people first get their IEPs, and if you screw up, when there's, those kids are in elementary schools, you're going to have a fighting parent for the rest of that school's child's educational trajectory. So anyway, just my two cents, thank you very much.
Ms. Tanner?
And that's the last speaker that signed up before 7:00 PM.
Great, thank you, and thank you for all of the citizens who came before us to speak tonight. At this time, we'll go ahead to Matters of the Board, and just go down the line. Smith, you have anything?
I know that we're going to receive a presentation on our SOL results soon, and Dr. Birdsong, I'd just like to reiterate that when we receive that presentation, I'd like to see something that addresses our schools that are not fully accredited, where we're not just receiving data of where they are now, but some type of plan of action that's going to show us how we're going to support those schools beyond what we're currently doing, so that those students can succeed. We have at least 17 from the previous school year, and I know we expect to see a little less, but we have schools, especially in Ward Four and Ward Three, that have been on the same path of not being fully accredited for a substantial amount of years, and it's time for us to specifically address. And it's time for us to specifically address how we're going to pull those, those schools up to par and give those students what they need to succeed. That's it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Martin? Okay, Ms. Basine?
Carrying over a couple of topics that came up as we were in closed session related to personnel and student support. Well, really, this, this item is related to student support. We talked a lot about out-of-district and we've been talking about it as Mr. Jordan mentioned earlier for a few years now, about out-of-district transfers. And if the board is in support, you know, I would like us to continue to urge some sort of report out on out-of-district transfers, not just as it relates to our high school students, but throughout the division. And what I mean, you know, for instance, is, you know, the number of applicants. Where they are, the zone schooled, are we seeing a trend with, at certain zone schools? What's the receiving school? And just a full report on out-of-district transfers as it may impact policy. So our policy on out-of-district transfers hasn't been updated since nineteen ninety-seven. And I could not find on board docs in our policy manual regulations around out-of-district transfers. And so, that's something if the administration could look into that to see if there are regulations that just may not be posted on board docs in our, in our manual. And if so, if that could possibly be shared so that we can look at that. But before the policy committee, you know, dives into, you know, revising any policy, I would first urge us to look at the data so that could then inform the policymaking. So at some time, you know, based in your, on your plans, upcoming topics, that's a topic that I would like to see us pay some attention to.
And without any objection, I'll add that to Dr. Gabriel when she gets back for a turntable.
We use the word out-of-district and I think it's confusing because NPS is a district. So I, I mean, just to clarify, it's out of attendance zones. And I know that we are all using that unchangeably, but just for the people that, just to clarify that.
Right.
It's out of your attendance zone.
People who live in Norfolk, but just out of their attendance zone.
Right, right, right.
Okay, cool. Do you have anything else, Ms. Basine?
The only other thing, again, we, we mentioned this, it is related in, in a way. But we had established a specialty program task force. We received updates along the way, but we were expecting some final recommendations from that task force. And I would, at some point, like a status update or if there are final recommendations, I would suggest that we get a report to the board so that we can plan accordingly. As I know, it's already, start of the school year, we'll open houses. The specialty program showcase and all that will start happening soon enough. And so, I would like a good handle on, on that.
Great.
If we can.
All right, Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, sir. Few things. One, Ms. Basine mentioned our policies. We had a presentation earlier on our crisis plan and some policies associated with that. I think at our September work session, our plan is to bring ourselves up to date with our policies. If not, I just want to beg and plead that we do that. There are, it looked like the Student Support Services and Administration did a good job with the crisis plan. But, you know, there is a policy change that went into effect July one. And I think that was one of the policies that we have not yet reflected in our policy manual. So I just want to encourage us to prioritize, to make sure that those policies that had legal impact based upon July one, that we make sure that we are in compliance with those policies by the time we finish in September. Also, our, our minutes. We, we need to come up with a strategy that we can get our minutes aligned. I think we're, we may be a few months behind in our minutes. So whatever strategy, whatever we need to do to make sure we can get that aligned, I think we should also work to have that accomplished in September. On the citizens' comments, we changed, well, the citizens' comment period was changed at the previous business meeting. At that meeting, we had some speakers that spoke in the Agenda Item Section on Non-Agenda Items. We had something similar this evening. I would like to encourage the board to go back to the combined citizens' comments for September and that we bring through our normal process a discussion of the full board as to changes we may want to do moving forward. Even as the citizens began speaking tonight on non-agenda items, I think it was about eight fifteen, could have been eight thirty. You know, I think of students who may be coming to address the board and I think it's better to provide those comments at the early part of the meeting and allow them to, to leave if they so do so. But I think that's really a discussion that needs to happen with the full board and the governance team. So, and I'm also concerned that we're outside of our alignments, alignment with our policy on citizens' comments. So maybe at the work session or some process in September, we can bring that back. But I think right now, it's, I think it's a good intent, but I think it deserves more discussion for implementation. We had a recent discussion about FOIA and questions around our meeting notices. I had requested if we could get a updated report from someone that just kind of outlines what occurred there. According to the newspaper, the pilot sent something to our attorneys. Our attorneys responded to something. I, I just think that's something that the full board needs to be aware of and make sure that we understand what has taken place there and is there anything there that needs to be resolved. And then finally, it was mentioned earlier about the Impact Aid. And just one thought for consideration, since there's going to be a big push for the census this year, that if there's some way to align the census door-to-door outreach with our efforts around Impact Aid, it may provide an opportunity to bear fruit, to encourage families to fill out the Impact Aid form and the census form since they all go back towards bringing resources to the city of Norfolk in general and for Impact Aid to the division in particular. So those are, oh, one last thing. Reading specialists, I don't know if you courted or not, but in the press release that the state went out, sent out regarding statewide SOL scores, there was a note in there about the state board who is pushing to have reading specialists and other specialists as part of the standards of quality. And I think for our division and really every division around the state. But over the years, the burden on that has fallen on the locality. The state board is trying to put it where it belongs in the SOQs in Richmond. And so, I think as we work on our advocacy plan for the upcoming year, that we take a look at that and be supportive of the state board's efforts to put that into the SOQ formula. Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you. Just kind of working back here, Ms. Martin and myself actually met this week to start talking about, and the planning of our Bring Your Legislative to School Day. And so, we have some dates that we're getting that information sent out and Ms. Tanner to help, help coordinate so we can draw a greater response and participation from our state, federal, and local elected officials. Going back, citizen comment, Mr. Jordan and myself did have a very helpful and healthy, respectful conversation about that. And I will share those items with Dr. Gabriel when she comes back. As you know, we still need to finish our organizational, our board norms protocol. We were unsuccessful in doing that this summer. And so, we need to make that a priority for December and I will share that information with her because that's where that belongs, where we can figure out how we're going to do our work and do it effectively for the year. The other item there, I see all that lovely maroon in the back there, hey, Bogota T. Washington High School. In one of the work sessions, I brought up about the opportunity to have some type of forum. And I'm very appreciative of, I'm glad I saw this, the Art Corridor. Appreciate you all sharing that. And I know the passion that many individuals have for Bogota T. Washington High School and what's happening with the curriculum and the programming for that school. And so, I am making a concerted effort and I started with that in our work session to work with Mr. Jordan and Ms. Smith as we share that space there on the citizens and students who are participating and to begin to start having some collective meetings and to put a group together so that we can have a community of stakeholders who are at the table, who are meeting with your elected representatives on the school board and so that we can help share the good message, but also to hear your insight, both for those who have been Bogota T. Washington legacy and those who are there present now. So I appreciate seeing you all out this evening. And I look forward to working with my colleagues and making that a very public thing that we want to work with Bogota T. Washington and bring the necessary attention that needs to be there. Transportation is another concern that I have. Anybody watching this here tonight, we need bus drivers in Norfolk Public Schools. That is an area that we're lacking in. And we, I was having a discussion with Mr. Hazlitt earlier today. So if you know anyone who has their CDL or wants to get that, we need you here in Norfolk Public Schools. We want to make sure that our students get to school safely. We have not all of our bus drivers that we need, but we need to get more in place there. And I know that some discussions have come up. I've been working with Councilwoman Johnson in our Ward Three alone and looking at some of our bus routes. And we can't correct those routes or do anything additional without more funds, but most importantly, more people. So we encourage individuals in the community, but if you know individuals or you're retired or you're looking for a great opportunity, we want you here at Norfolk Public Schools, right, Dr. Birdsong?
Absolutely.
Okay. So that's just my public appeal to anyone out there. And I think what I've got here, so obviously, I did not meet the eight o'clock objective, but it's okay, right? I'm going to get everyone home here. So again, we, we appreciate and we look forward to working with our student representative here. Dr. Birdsong, do you have any closing remarks?
Yes, I'd like to share that tomorrow, we will have a Support Our Schools Day. We're very excited about that. When I came on board and with the building principles, one thing that they recommended to me as a whole was to consider some options for field day. And so, and I did that. We came up, certainly, we met about it, we talked about it. We talked with, I talked with central office administrators and we decided that we need to support our schools on that day. Schools will have the opportunity to engage in specialized, individualized, professional development and team-building activities. And teachers are excited about having that time in their buildings. And so, we are, we are really happy about that. Many central office administrators will be in schools tomorrow, helping new teachers put up bulletin boards and doing whatever schools need, need us to do. And so, we're very excited about that. So board members, we invite you to come out tomorrow and whatever school you'd like to support, just let the administrators know and they will be happy to receive you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And again, we want to thank all of our staff, administrators, teachers, everyone. As my pastor would say, la di da di and everybody. But we appreciate you and we look forward to a great school year and most importantly, putting students first. So with that, if there's no objection, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded, uh, second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded that we adjourn. Is there any objection? Hearing none, we stand adjourned.